Thanks, everybody, for coming. I appreciate us hosting this year. We are excited to have you all at our place of the alternate of the U.S. TV here. And I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving break. I know a Monday meeting after Thanksgiving is probably like a 8:30 a.m. meeting, so we appreciate everybody transitioning from your families back and digging right in. We've got a great budget season kickoff, and I think it's reflective that we do this together. And I really appreciate everybody taking part in this, and it's going to be a hopefully a good session. I can say that as I transition off. In fact, speaking of that, I do want to say congratulations to Debbie for an amazing service that she did for the city council. Debbie is going to be transitioning off, so we wish her well in her next pursuits, but we appreciate all your time. And Debbie and I are going to be looking forward to sitting in her backyard and watching you all do the magic. So, thank you very much, Debbie, for all your service. And like to welcome Art and MK. Art, obviously, was elected to city council, and MK is our new school board rep. So, we really appreciate you both serving and digging in. I think, as you probably heard from many of the colleagues, it's such an amazing chapter for a professional giving back to the community, working with amazing people, with the staff, with your colleagues. So, we're looking forward to you all participating. So, it's going to be fun. So, and then I think overall, you know, the way we do this is, as Mary Beth will say, I know there's different analogies. I don't have them all in my head, but something about a zipper, something that's really, something comes together. That's all I remember. But we do that every year, and I think that's what we're trying to do every single year, is start this together, work together. Clearly, what we're talking about are difficult issues in terms of budget, in terms of taxpayer money. But I think how we do this, how we partner together with our city council colleagues, how Dr. Dade and Mr. Shields will work together, how your counterparts will work together, that's the best way to do it. That's the only way we know how to do it. And we know that they're going to be challenging discussions. There always are, but that's part of this process. And we do that together, and we learn from that, and we keep going, and that's what we're excited about. You're going to see a couple of changes, as I talked about learning. The school board side, under Ann Sherwood's leadership, and Terry Dade's leadership, and Alicia Prince, our new COO's leadership, they worked on reflecting from last year's budget, and they tried to come up with a couple of significant changes, not just structurally, but philosophically, to make this process for us to come together. And I think you're going to hear about those tonight, but you're going to feel those, hopefully, in the next five to six months. One of the big changes is our calendar. You all know that our calendars have not exactly been aligned, and so we are working on what they have proposed is a new calendar to make sure that our steps and our milestones link up better with yours, so we can work together. We're not having that 11th hour push, and that, and so I think it's going to be definitely, we're starting earlier, I think, a month earlier than we normally have. So, that's going to be a big change. The other change you're going to hear and feel about is how we structure the budget. What you're going to hear tonight from Dr. Dade and his team is a budget. We're going to start from kind of the bottom up and move up instead of kind of the top down, and we're going to start to go with a need space. We understand that, you know, we're in different, challenging, unknown times, so we all understand that. But I think what Dr. Dade is going to do, and was challenged the school board to do, is to really try to figure out how do we build that budget together, starting now, instead of trying to figure out how we do that. And there's different ways to do that, but we're going to do that with staff, with the community, with the school board, and that's why we're starting earlier. So, we hope that the budget we're presenting is reflective of the current needs, the current economic situation, in terms of how we're navigating all this process. So, we're excited about that. I appreciate everybody's feedback. I know, Erin, we've had many conversations about how to adjust this, and really appreciate, Ann, your leadership on working and meeting with a number of folks in this room to try to get that shift to happen. So, looking forward to seeing how that matriculates. So, with that, I am looking forward to everyone digging in tonight. Letty, would you like to say, or do you not?
I'll just be brief.
Yeah?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, thank you to Tate and Terry for hosting us tonight and for the delicious meal. You caught me mid-broccoli bite. So, congrats also, and welcome to all of our new members, and also an early farewell to Debbie and Tate as well. So, this is our once-in-a-year chance to prove that we can actually all fit together in a room and play nicely. But actually, in all seriousness, this is actually one of my favorite gatherings of the year, because, and actually, I'm not going to talk about Falls Church, but for in a year when public service is actually under attack, to see all of you in the room, all of you kind of local leaders and neighbors and friends coming together, to think about doing the right thing for our community is really meaningful. And so, I thank you in advance for the collaboration and the leadership to come, because really, when we look at like local budgets and everything that's going on, frankly, in the world, that we really have it quite good in Falls Church. And so, I know it might be rocky, but I actually have great faith that we'll figure it out, because we have a lot of great things going for us in Falls Church, and I think that starts with everyone in the room here today. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Letty. And before we get started with our formal event, we do want to say one huge thank you to Richard Kane and his team for cooking tonight. As always, we appreciate it, Mr. Kane, for all that you do for us and for the students. It's great to have a slice of meals for us. Appreciate you taking the time tonight. Thank you for your tune. All right, sir. Thank you. All right. So, with that, I think we're going to go ahead and turn it over to...
You need to... Disclosure.
Disclosure. Okay.
My name's Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager for the City of Falls Church. I'm really happy to be working with our new superintendent, Terry Dade, and with Chief Operating Officer, Alicia Prince. This is a continuation, I think, of a very strong partnership between general government and schools, and really appreciate their leadership. I also want to just note a few other members of staff. We have Jenny Carroll and Andy Young here, deputy city managers. We have our new finance director, David Seau, who is, you'll hear from later today. He's in his fourth week with the city, and so he also gets to deliver the thing that everyone likes the most about tonight, which is the revenue forecast. And I really appreciate the rigor and the discipline that he has been using with our finance staff to develop that. And Cindy Mester, our community relations and legislative affairs director, is here as well. Mary Catherine Chase will be here in just a moment. And so, we're looking forward to a good evening together tonight. My job is to set the stage for Terry, and Terry's going to be our first content presenter tonight, but I'll give an overview of what we're going to try to cover at tonight's meeting. So, we'll start with a presentation on school enrollment trends and cost drivers, sort of setting the stage for budget development on the school side for FY27. Then we'll transition, and I'll provide an update on the West Falls project. And in that, just to kind of a reminder to everybody, sort of the multi-year process of how we financed this high school through economic development and how that is playing out in terms of the numbers. And I'll also have a slide at the end, just to have a quick discussion about what's happening next door with the Womata site and the Pitt headquarters site. We won't spend much time on that, but just if there are any questions about that. And then after that summary, we'll turn it over to David Seau, our finance director, and he will walk us through our best view about the future. We're trying to forecast revenues now for what will be happening 12 months from now, and that is a difficult thing to do in the current environment, but we are doing it with great seriousness and purpose, because we know revenue forecast is so important for setting sort of a policy framework for going ahead. So, that's what we're planning to do tonight. After that, the city council's going to have a work session. We have a couple of items that we need to do to set up for our meeting on December 8th, and one of the items in the work session discussion is the, is a review of the council's budget guidance resolution, which they traditionally adopt at the last meeting of the year, December 8th. And that gives staff direction in terms of how we build our budgets, and really sets the stage, I think, for that coordination and communication between the city council and the school board as well. With that, Terry, I think I'll turn it over to you. All right.
I think Mary Beth's ready now.
Ah, we'll do conflict disclosure, and then Dr. Dade.
I make the following statement before the city council's discussion of the FY27 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and a member of a group of three more people who may be affected by these matters. However, I can participate in them fairly objectively and in the public interest. While I have the microphone, I'm just going to point out that I'm wearing my zipper earrings this evening to symbolize the zipper of all of us working together to get something done and accomplished.
Thank you. So, I'm excited to join you all this evening for my first joint budget meeting. Wanted to just introduce our new chief operating officer, again, Ms. Alicia Prince. We're thrilled to have her with us this evening. As Mr. Shields stated, we're going to go through enrollment projections as our first bit of business, and then folding right into our maintenance of effort budget request for fiscal year '27. So, to start echoing what Mr. Gould and Mayor Hardy stated, our whole relationship is built on that synergy between the schools and general government. There is no doubt with anyone in this room that we rely on the stellar reputation of what I call the allure of living in Falls Church, and then the stellar reputation that our schools bring each and every day across the Commonwealth and the country. So, we're looking forward to continuing that partnership that has been on display for a while. We can look right outside this, these windows and see the benefit of that relationship in this beautiful high school and everything that's going on by way of development around us. So, just as a reminder, if you didn't know it already, NESH in 2025 rated Falls Church City Public Schools as the number one school district in Virginia, the number one school district in the DC area, and new number one middle school in Virginia. So, lots of ratings, and everyone can dispute whatever you want to say, but I know when we were looking for houses, a lot of us rely on NESH when we're doing our research for our families. One of the things that is the highlight and the gold star of Falls Church City Public Schools is being a pre-K to 12 IB district. So, these are just some of the highlights from this past year, with a record number of diplomas earned in this rigorous curriculum, the beginning of career-related program certificates earned as well, and then our pass rates in the upper 90s in English, math, social studies, and science. So, we're continuing to amaze everyone around us with having a rigorous program, and students that meet those demands in our classrooms each and every day. So, beyond celebrating those successes, we wanted to start with some grounding in projection. So, we have Dr. Waters with us here this evening to go over our projections for next school year. And as you know, enrollment projections start to drive our budget process. So, we're excited to have you with us again, Dr. Waters. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Couple odd numbers that I'll throw at you along the way. Level set here. That's me. So, this year, I think I've been told that most of you, I believe, have seen the presentation from a couple of weeks ago that I gave to the school board. It's going to be the exact same presentations with a couple little notes along the way of things that we've kind of found out, but I think it's worthwhile to just go back and look back. You guys feel the school board is more than welcome to pepper me with questions again, same with the city council, because unfortunately, this year, I did not get as close as last year. And so, it is, you know, I'm not really looking for excuses, but I would just try to clarify on why I think that I missed. That being said, you know, Weldon Cooper was also with me along the way, although I certainly went out on a much greater limb last year than they did. But we're also not alone. Arlington County was 809 students below their forecast. Can you hear me? Whoop. I'm kind of loud, so sometimes I can't tell if I'm talking into the mic or not. Fairfax County had a loss of more than 4,000 students, and they cited immigration policies as a potential reason. Montgomery County is down 2,600 students, just year over year, and international enrollment's down sharply, and they forecast student lost over the next six years. This is undoubtedly, that's a fun color, this is undoubtedly, or this is undoubtedly, at least partially driven by immigration. Okay? So, the last time Trump was in office, net international migration, which is a red color in these charts, fell from 40,000 down to 23,000. Then, the first year of true COVID restrictions, net international migration into the entire DCMSA contracted to 17,000. Following the expansion of the Biden policies, it went up very quickly to about 70,000, and then 83,000 between 2023 and 2024. This data are collected on July. This number, it will undoubtedly contract sharply based on the rhetoric coming out of Washington, based on what we're all watching in the news. This isn't going to be a gradual decline like last time. This is just going to probably just look like this the other way. In addition, in addition to immigration policies, the other thing that is very much on my mind on why I think I got it wrong is federal job losses in the DC metro. So, in December of 2024, the DC metro as a whole had 380,000, and the most recent data that we have at the sub-national level is 534,000. Some data came out in between when I met with the school, the school board. At the national level, if we're looking at national, national federal employment excluding USPS, so that's, those folks really weren't hit quite as hard. In August, national federal employment declined 3.3% from August '24 to '25. It declined 3.4% from September '24 to September '25. So, this number is going to continue to fall, or at least stay where it is. I suspect that it will continue to fall further. We will get the sub-regional, sort of regional level data on October 11th, I believe, is the BLS's current schedule for release on that. It appears that we will not ever get the October numbers, so those will just be missed. And it is likely that, you know, I was talking with some folks today, we, I suspect we will get November numbers at the end of December, but that is not, not an assured thing. Nonetheless, federal losses will continue. The second bit that obviously impacts our region a ton are, whoop, I think I'm missing a slide. Interesting. I think the, a slide got skipped, but in any case, professional, scientific, and technical job losses turned negative in 2024. They had started to, or they turned negative in 2023. They started to turn positive in late 2024, and those tipped back negative basically as soon as the new administration came in. These are federal contractors. These are the folks who are living in Falls Church who can afford the high housing costs. DC Metro finally tipped negative in July in total number of jobs. So, in regional economics, we basically, the federal contractors and the federal employees go out and, you know, buy groceries and do things around the area. Well, if they've stopped spending money, well, then we have just fewer jobs generally. That did finally turn negative in July. It accelerated in August, and I fully expect that to accelerate into September as well as October, when the folks who took the deferred retirement package, the fork in the road, come off payroll. Those folks came off payroll in October 1st. We do not know how many folks came off payroll. On this note, this is just a small caveat, I put out an employment forecast for the entire DCMSA. I stopped forecasting that in July before I knew what the numbers were for, for Falls Church, because there are so many known unknowns. There are so many things that we don't really understand yet that were either about to happen or in the process of happening, and it was very unclear the scale of these things. School forecasting, as it turns out, seems to be a very sensitive aspect of all of this. This has knock-on effects, obviously. So, in the wake of the election, this does happen immediately after the election. This is November. When we look at condos and co-ops, those very rise in Falls Church regarding end-of-month inventory. So, this is what you can peruse on Zillow on the last day of each month, more or less. That increased from 3 to 34, so it's, it's not necessarily every condo in Falls Church is, is, is on, is on sale, and everybody's trying to flee, but we are seeing. I know somebody personally who sold their pied-a-terre in Falls Church because they weren't coming up as much, and so they sold that recently. We're seeing it in detached homes are climbing only to, you know, to nine, so it's not a massive number at the moment, but we are seeing a softening in the for-sale home inventory. Falls Church is still an incredibly desirable place to live. People still want to live here. The median sales price, and these numbers are incredibly bouncy, and I leave the bounciness so that you guys can see what's going on. Basically, it's such a small number of sales each month that it makes it impossible, but the, the number, the median, which is the middle number, it's very, it's the most low cost.
This is a small drawdown agreement at small, at small sales, 1.4 for the most recent month for a for-sale home. Okay? People still like living in Falls Church. It is still an incredibly attractive place to live. I do personally believe it is in large part because of the number one school system in Virginia, the DMV. This building is gorgeous. People want to be partners, especially to take care of all their children's education, which these folks and professionals...
Technical folks do. We are seeing multifamily stabilized vacancy rates climb this year. This is, these are units that have been on for more than 18 months, so it excludes the stuff that just came on across the parking lot. This is stuff that's been on for a while or has reached a vacancy rate of 90% or higher. Now, turning to enrollments, okay? So, this is kind of the broader economic environment in which we find ourselves. If we look at September 30th enrollment, we've taken a big pause, okay? If we look all the way back, as far as the school system is dated, '85, it's a pretty steady rise. Then we have COVID, and then you get this little COVID decline as people are looking for more space. You guys are building a lot more housing that we can look out and see during this period, and you're getting fewer number of students being generated from more units. It started to climb again. I had forecasted to start to move back towards pre-pandemic generation rates. Obviously, that didn't happen, and recently, we're at 2,712. That being said, this year, and the whole reason that I bring up all the federal employment and the professional, scientific, and technical, in March of 2025, you guys hit an enrollment record. There were 2,753 students enrolled in Falls Church City Schools in March. That was effectively the Weldon Cooper forecast to September. I think theirs was, there was like four, four students higher, maybe six. This is effectively the Weldon Cooper forecast, and this doesn't include any of the new housing. It declined thereafter, which is pretty unusual. So, if we look at enrollment increases from the start of the year to the end of the year, it has typically wavered between 15 and 40 students over the last few years. And then if you look at the number of students who come in over the summer, it's also, this year, it was negative 27, but the prior two years, after we got through some of the COVID messiness, was 66 and 54. If we just add the average of those 60 students to the, this is the June number, so it's not even the peak, we'd effectively be at 2,800 students. There's a, this is a very long-winded way for me to say. I've looked at these numbers a lot of different ways. I'm going to give you one method. I've looked at these numbers a lot of different ways. It's very difficult for me to keep the enrollment numbers down, okay? And so, the only way that I can think about it is in the regional sense of the air has been let out of our region's economy. People are not smashing to get in here like they once were, and things have really taken us a healthy breather. Healthy is subjective. But nonetheless, it's actually quite difficult for me to keep this number somewhat down. Looking forward, the way that we've been estimating it is basically take the number of housing units, estimate the number of new households coming out of these buildings, which is applying a vacancy rate to, and I've adjusted that a little bit this year, and then estimate the school enrollment from school generation rates, which I will address. I think there will probably be a question, so I will talk about that a little more at length tonight than last, last time. And the Weldon Cooper method is just a projection based on grade progression ratio. So, you say 103, you know, 103% of the students last year shifted up, so we'll just kind of reapply these things moving forward, and it's a relatively good indicator. That being said, it does not take into account all the housing that's being built, and so this is why I was brought in, was to look at it a different way, and also stand it, stand here so you guys can yell at me instead of, instead of others. The generation rates that I'd like to just kind of point out, particularly the condos, so this is, might as well stick on this one. If we go back to the pre-pandemic, do, do, we'll go back here just a little bit, you'll notice that we were basically at 2,712 students before all of this housing came online. So, we're effectively back here at, with, with more housing units, okay? The way that shows up here is that the generation rates were higher. So, you get 0.258 students per, per unit, 0.24, and then you had COVID, and it declined substantially to 0.195. Last year was at 0.202, and so it was starting to tick back up a little bit. And what was concerning me last year is that this number was going to start to look more like pre-pandemic generations. One caveat about these, they are a little bit different than last year, because I've taken into account vacancy rate data. When you miss, like I did, I went back and reassessed some things, so I've taken into account some vacancy rates. So, I was expecting this number to start, look a lot more like this number. That didn't happen. It actually declined. This concerns me, because it's kind of, it's sort of illustrative of what's happening in the region. And when we apply that to the number of households that are being generated, this, for next year, I'm thinking at the moment that we'll have enrollment of about 2,745, which is an increase of about 34 students. This still concerns me. After the school board presentations, I got a couple of questions regarding confidence intervals and these types of things. I still get concerned that if things start to pick up again, if the economy broadly picks up, because we're not the only ones being impacted by the current environment. It's not just DOGE. It is not just federal employment losses. We also have incredibly high interest rates, which are designed to slow the economy, because we've been having inflation. And actually, in some ways, we do look like other metros, but if we start to lower inflation rates, or, I'm sorry, if we start to lower the Fed funds rate, whoop, things might start to pick back up. So, this number still continues to freak me out as being too low. That being said, it still comes in above Weldon Cooper's, largely because as these buildings go towards stabilized vacancy rates as they fill up, which I suspect they will, maybe the rent will be somewhat lower, okay? But eventually, you know, the folks who own these buildings want them to fill up, so you cut prices to fill them up. And so, I suspect they will fill up, and we will get back there. And nonetheless, we will kind of get back towards something of... And nonetheless, we will kind of get back towards something of an increase, not quite so much of a pause. We can look at projections by grade. This is a modified grade progression ratio that takes into account, basically, I kind of do it perverse way of Weldon Cooper, where I look at the total and then follow various large grades through the snake. Not massively of interest, once you divide out 30 students over the 12 grades, nothing's massively different. But I do want to just pause on the caveats of the moment, which are the federal shutdown has resulted in a lack of timely data. We don't know how many folks took the deferred retirement package. We would have found out two weeks or a week and a half ago, so we don't know. Housing data are the most robust and up-to-date, and both for-sale and multifamily data show a softening. Federal immigration policies are likely to reduce upward pressure on enrollment. Inflation is still running above target. It does appear that the Federal Reserve is going to lower their target rate, which might start to stimulate growth. I do think that the federal government is likely to behave somewhat less erratically, just given that we have elections coming up next year. I think that will quiet a lot of stuff down personally, and I could be very wrong about that. And one other thing that I was thinking about earlier today, Falls Church unemployment rate, and I saw this, somebody else is going to give you this data point as well, Falls Church unemployment rate jumped from 2.9%, I have a number somewhere. Stick with me. It jumped from 2.1%. The unemployment rate, so this is a household survey, so they asked people living in Falls Church, are you in the labor force or do you have a job or not? It jumped from 2.1% in December of 2024 to 4.6% in August. That's an increase of 200 people. Okay, so Falls Church, and this is very narrowly focused on Falls Church, it's not kind of like the metro region of Northern Virginia, is being impacted by what's happening. Okay, so if these folks start to miss mortgage payments and these types of things, they might be inclined to leave the area. I think I'll stop there. I can answer questions about generation rates later, but I have some thoughts on that. But yeah, why don't I pause and answer some questions? Yeah. Or I can just run away.
Just a couple of quick questions. So for the home inventory chart that you had, was that also not including anything? Well, I guess, how was that calculated? Because I know that we have a lot of new condo units that came on, so that jump up in condo would make sense, given that we have a whole bunch of new condos that just moved in.
I told the school board this, and I still believe it to be true. These come from GetSmartCharts, so it's the Bright MLS, the multiple listing service. I do not believe those would have gone through the Bright MLS because the developer is selling those, not Realtors.
Gotcha, okay. So this is only Realtors?
This should just be Realtors. It should not include that.
Okay, that makes sense. And then I was curious, oh yeah, so the vacancy chart that you had as well, was that specifically for Falls Church or was that for the region?
That's for, this is for Falls Church.
And then the final data?
But I compared it to a lot of different versions of the region.
How does this compare to the region?
Region is slightly higher. The region is slightly higher. You guys are a desirable place to live. I'm not like pandering the crowd. The region is slightly higher, less bouncy, and this is stabilized, so it also doesn't include this. And it's a caveat. I don't use CoSARS forecast anywhere.
And then I was also curious, just your thoughts on like, do you also track? I know you mentioned that Weldon Cooper tracks birth rate for the pre-K numbers, but like, do you track birth rates? How does that play into, I mean, not just for next year, but maybe for the future?
I have a lot of thoughts on the birth rate. I think the, I don't know how to answer this. Maybe go look at here. Your biggest grades are later. Falls Church is pretty expensive to live in. Families with young kids have a hard time living here unless it's multifamily. So I, and multifamily tends to be a little bit more, I don't want to say transient, but it shifts around a little bit more than single-family. I have no idea if this is on or not. Anyway, I'm actually just going to set it down and yell at you.
No, no, it's actually for the recording.
Oh, okay.
So when they're watching.
I don't think the birth rates are playing nearly as much into this as the domestic migration and international migration. So yes, birth rates are a thing. Yes, Weldon Cooper looks at them. I don't view that as big of a driver of what's going on in Falls Church than just general churn.
Thank you.
Can we just return to the missing numbers? So the numbers that we won't get in terms of the BLS reports because of the October shutdown, to some extent are the most relevant numbers for us if they're the September 30th numbers in terms of voluntary early retirement and the deferred resignation program of people who put off resigning until September 30th but aren't actually retiring. They'll just be unemployed as of September 30th if they didn't get new jobs. And then you have the early retirement people who are technically retired, but retired earlier than they thought they would. So their numbers are smaller in terms of income than they expected, although they'll retain health benefits. And so I'm just trying to determine, right, are those numbers going to get rolled in somewhere else on later months? Are we just out those kind of numbers entirely? Like, how do we figure out who's part of what group for our local planning purposes?
They'll turn up in the November. So we've started, I mean, it's interesting, I think it's interesting, but the federal government has never been shut down for an entire month. So the interesting thing about that is that I've been actually called by the BLS. They said, they called me and they say, you know, at some point I had a consulting firm, I don't anymore. But they used to call me and they'd say, do you have any employees? How much do you pay? This type of stuff. And it was over the course of a while, and then they'd call back. And then they figured out I was in the wrong geography because they thought I was in Virginia, But the point of that is that guy wasn't, like, he was not working for the entirety of October, so he wasn't calling anybody. So the people who call were not working, so we don't have the October numbers. But they did start calling in November, so we will know, basically, there'll be a gap in the data. So we will know the November numbers, and that'll basically pick up. We won't know kind of how bad it was in October and then kind of think about that, but it'll show up in the November data, which I hope will still be released at the end of December, but it could get delayed because everything's kind of delayed right now as they clean up stuff. So that is the most relevant number in my mind, is this probably fell a little bit more into September. I have no idea how far it fell in October. The October number is the number that I'm very unsure about. And it's, regarding this, you know, I mean, I talked to some of you actually about the same thing, so this is something that I was not aware of. I ran into Mayor Hardy's predecessor before this, and he was telling me about the Department of State had a deal with Falls Green. And you can see when their contract ended because it absolutely drops off by 100 students in 2020. We're a company town. We really are, and this is really how sensitive it is. So that federal number is really important to us. I'm wondering, it could go a bunch of different ways of, you know, I mean, I know somebody else whose wife, he was a planner in the area, his wife was a federal employee, she got laid off, so they left, and he, you know, they moved about three hours away, and he commutes in every so often. But they no longer live here, so that's one way. And then so we get backfilling the students. Anyway, those employees, I'm very interested to see how this all plays out. But yes, I think that's the most relevant number, is that October federal employment number, and I don't know.
So do you think when you get that number and have a little more certainty there, you might want to change this enrollment projections for next year? Or are you, this is your projection?
I mean, I've told Alicia that I will, I'm happy to continue to work on them just moving forward. I think it's, you know, I think this is fine. I still continue to be concerned that it might be low. We could get a surprise either way. I'm not by nature a very bold person, so I'll be giving you this number last year. Getting burned is not my favorite. But I think as the numbers roll in, if the federal government stops contracting, as we watch monthly enrollment numbers from the school, seeing how this upcoming housing cycle goes, it really could go, in my mind, a ton of different ways. And Falls Church, and again, I am not pandering the crowd. When I give a similar-ish talk in Montgomery County, it's very do and gloom. Montgomery County's economy is struggling pretty hard. Northern Virginia, and I've been saying this for a while, I think it could escape relatively okay because of the skew towards DoD contracting. Epidemiology is not super popular, so Montgomery County is getting clobbered. Maryland just closed their budget gap of $3 billion, and it appeared to $2 billion this year, and a lot faster than we were anticipating. It's not really happening here, and I think it's because the DoD, you know, the DoD spending in Northern Virginia. So we kind of got to wait for the folks downtown to make a budget, which they get, you know, obviously, they fight about a lot. I suspect by March, everyone will have a much better clarity about where this is all
So the chart you had with the international migration, the chart you had with the international migration, I'm trying to understand the definition of international migration. Is that international residents moving into the US? Or is it US citizens returning to the US? Because we have a large population of USAID, we have State Department. Would they show up if they moved back to the area, which they've been doing over the summer? Would that show up under international migration or domestic migration?
It would show up, I believe in domestic migration. I'm fairly certain it would show up in domestic migration. That international migrants would be, this was a foreign person moving to the US. And I'm very hesitant about this, but, so I'm going to get back to you, but I believe they would show up in domestic migration.
Okay, so that was sizable pullback.
Yeah. During COVID?
No, when they killed USAID and pulled them in.
No, that, I'm fairly certain that they would show up in domestic migration, but I'm very hesitant about this right now. That's a fantastic question that I need to double-check, but I'm fairly certain they show up here. In any case, I don't think it's going to, it's not going to change my concern regarding the net international migration and restricting. Yeah, if it does, if they do show up, which I really do not think they do, you know, and I'm just trying to use full disclosure as I can, I'm fairly certain, I'm like 90% certain they show up here, it's not really going to change this that much, but I will double-check or somebody can ask Chad GBD or something like this. Lottie?
Thank you for this. So I'm not going to debate you this year on blended ratios or the ones you're using.
I did do them.
Thank you for being prepared. But actually, I wanted to offer another data point that I actually think is really interesting. I think it actually comes to the same conclusion you have, which is there was a lot of uncertainty. So I love the schools analysis that we do every year of the where students live, because I actually think that's the most telling. So I think this year, we actually saw 40 new students come in from our new mixed-use buildings, which is actually in line with what we expected. So I actually think that our detailed ratios and our year blended ratios are actually holding up, and those three buildings are actually at 88% occupancy, 65% and 75%. So they are filling up as expected and not fully occupied now. So that gives me confidence that whatever uncertainty and weariness we had last year going into this budget cycle of, gosh, are we really going to hit 158 students or not, is actually fine. But the interesting data point is we actually lost students from single-family homes, which hasn't happened since COVID. And so if we did not actually have the 40 new students from mixed-use development, we'd actually see declining enrollment, just like Arlington, just like Montgomery County, just like Fairfax. And so that, to me, points to the same conclusion you had, which is we're really not immune to the big regional things going on. The only reason we stayed flat is because we added the new housing, and all those came in online and as predicted based on the ratios we're using. So I think the main uncertainty is obviously the federal changes, but knowing that we're actually losing population everywhere else except for new housing is important to keep in mind.
The, yes, the single, if you actually, like, if you take out, because townhomes fell by three students, so that's like, I don't know, we lost, we literally lost them. If that were zero, if townhomes, the older condos and apartments and single-family, because the older condos and single-family was zero, single-family was negative 29, if those had just been zero, if those had stayed the exact same, we'd be at effectively the Weldon Cooper's projections from last year without, or I guess with the mixed-use as well. But yes, the mixed-use are filling up. They are filling up. It's a great place to live. I did do blended, or I did do individual ratios. I have a whole lot of thoughts about them. I spent a lot of time before I abandoned them. If, so I use a blended generation rate, so we just kind of like lump them together. I've discussed using individual building generation rates. It is so noisy that you kind of end up having to invent a new rule for every building, and it gets incredibly messy incredibly fast, but I did try.
So piggybacking off of the previous comments, with the single-family homes, are they currently vacant? Are there people moving in that don't have kids? Like, are you able to add any color to that?
So in discussions with other people, I think if it's okay, Mary Beth pointed this out, when I was talking with a couple of other people, the State Department, so I did not know this before, but the State Department had a contract with Falls Green. You can see when, if you guys have those numbers in front of you, you can see when their contract ended because it was 2019, I think Falls Green had something like 195 students in it. The next year, they had 95. Okay? If some of those, so I bring this up because you do have a lot of federal workers here, right? They're churning around, they're living other places. If they owned a home here and they were living abroad, it could be the case, and this is totally just pontificating. If they were living abroad and renting their house, but they're like, well, I want to come back and live in that house now because, you know, the federal government doesn't want me wherever I was, and they don't have kids, then they stop renting the house with somebody with children, and then they just move back into their house. So that is absolutely one scenario that I think would absolutely be the case.
So on that counter argument, though, many of those families that do live abroad, State Department or whatever agency they're with, they do have kids and they send them to international schools and they move back, so I'm not quite sure.
It could go, that's absolutely also totally legitimate.
I'm just trying to figure out why there was this drop in single-family homes for enrollment purposes.
The short answer is I'm not sure, and this could play out a bunch of different ways. I think your theory's perfectly right. I'm sorry, I don't have a.
No, no, that's okay, and I'm sure that goes into.
Time check, just a.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe one more question, if everyone's comfortable with that. We'll move on to Dr. Day's presentation.
Sure. And I'm going to sneak off and head out. So if you do have questions, I am around. Please email me. I'm happy to continue answering questions and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you so much again to Dr. Waters. We sincerely appreciate your time this evening, numerous evenings with our team, and I'm sure we'll stay in close contact as the months progress. So thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Have a good night.
All right, the next part of our presentation is going to be on our. All right, the next part of our presentation is going to be on our forecasted expenditures for next year, and Ms. Prince will lead us through that discussion.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to sit before you this evening. I feel very welcome here in Falls Church City and very excited to be a part of the work that's happening here under Dr. Daye. I'm going to get us to this presentation. All right, wonderful. So just want to start and say, our budget is overwhelmingly a people budget, and so one thing that I want to talk through, we heard about, you know, the quality that we must maintain, the great standards that we've set here, we've heard about enrollment landscape, we're looking at our cost drivers as we move forward this evening. The foundation of our success here in the division is and always will be our people. Therefore, the most critical cost drivers that we'll talk about this evening for fiscal year 2027 are directly related to retaining and supporting that talent. As the largest public employer in Falls Church City, we know our people are an igniting power to our outcomes. The salary numbers you see here before you are based on fully adhering to our collective bargaining agreement, our CBA, and our ongoing crucial effort to attract and retain high-quality staff in a competitive region. The step increase that you see is the ongoing commitment to progress school employees through the salary scale annually. The 1.2 million for step increases is an obligation that honors experience and commitment, and that, again, helps us to attract and retain high-quality staff in a competitive region. Next, you'll see our cost of living adjustment, or our COLA. This is also an essential, essential component for us. It moves the entire salary scale forward to ensure our wages don't corrode against inflation and remain competitive with surrounding school divisions. We know inflation is just a high driver right now for what we're seeing in our economy, unfortunately. COLAs or cost of living adjustments are based on increases in the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerical workers. That's the CPIWs. And they're calculated on a monthly basis by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. What you see here, the 1.396 million is 2.8%, which comes through and is a number that is given to us by the federal government. And then lastly, what you'll see on this slide is health insurance. We're planning conservatively for a 10% increase in healthcare costs. We align with the city around that. Again, these are numbers that, with just the challenging times that we're in and the unknown times, that we continue to watch and we will continue to watch. We hope that, we, we are supposed to have numbers, and we hope that we'll continue to get those updated numbers as we get to the end of the year, and we'll adjust those, but we, we believe that we had this number correctly. So I'm going to talk about our current obligations. Beyond salaries and benefits, the basic cost of doing business continues to rise, and I, I alluded to that earlier around inflation. This slide before you covers our critical rise in non-personnel operating obligations. We will have a daily operations contractual increase of $250,000. These are our current, current service and materials costs that we contract for, and so we know we're going to see an increase in those numbers. We're also allocating $150,000 specifically for events, academics, and career, career and technical education, or CTE, programming. This includes our partnership with the Arlington Career Center and Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. We have students that participate in both. Those are yearly costs to us, and so we, we know we will see an increase, and we've already had those conversations. And then finally, we are budgeting an additional $475,000 to cover inflation on utilities and insurance. These are fixed costs that are largely beyond our control, but they are absolutely essential to us operating. And again, those are our utilities, our insurance, things that we must have in order to operate day to day. So I want to talk through some, as Dr. Gold alluded to earlier, our budget process update. Again, very grateful to Board Member Sherwood, who walked us through this process to help us think about how we think about budgeting and how we do this in a way that really brings us all together and, as Councilwoman Conolly would say, rip the zipper and making sure that we're all doing that together. And so as we move into the development phase for this fiscal year, we want to start by framing how we'll approach the process itself. We've made some intentional updates to ensure greater clarity and alignment from the start. Our overarching goal is to lead a clear budget process that achieves two critical outcomes. First, it must thoroughly validate our operational needs, and second, it must directly reflect the board's core priorities. We are beginning with a laser focus on the maintenance of effort. This means the initial step to ensure we first secure the funding required to simply maintain our current high level of service and honor all existing commitments. This focus is based on, excuse me, this focus is based on sustaining top performance. We want to have continued strategic investment even at the current, even at the most current operational level, and that is what is required to maintain the division status as the leading educational division here in the state and in the area as a whole. Our entire approach is governed by fiscal responsibility. Every request will be carefully vetted to align with the board's strategic priorities and adhere to the current fiscal forecast. So this leads me to talk about budget enhancements, which you see as the bottom line. So in the past, you would see budget enhancements be a part of this process this evening. We're not bringing those before you. What we're bringing are our maintenance of effort because we want to talk about what we need in order to operate. And so instead, we'll formally present comprehensive requests to the board in January for a full review through this process. And so that's really important to us. We want to talk about maintenance of effort, what it takes for us to run this district exactly as it is next year, and then we'll talk about enhancements that we know are critical for us to continue to move forward in being the number one division. So this last slide here that you see is, when you bring all these things together to the previous slides and we talk about our obligations contractual, we talk about our people and supporting our people, our contractual, our benefits, operational inflation, we arrive at our total maintenance of effort, which you see before you. So to fully meet this maintenance of effort and honor our existing contracts, we're currently looking at a local transfer increase of 5.02%. It's important to emphasize that this represents the minimum funding needed to simply maintain our current level of services, and this is the starting point for our budget discussions. And so wanted to make sure we're clear on those numbers. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Daye to share some additional updates.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. So wanted to just couch that maintenance of effort number in some history. So this was the maintenance of effort request over the past five years. So you can see it's fluctuated quite a bit with the numbers tipping pretty heavy in, in the last three budget conversations with city council over the past three years. So last year, the maintenance of effort request was 8.8%, as you'll recall. Ms. Prince talked about our maintenance of effort being 5.02%. So as Dr. Waters presented, there's, still remains a lot of uncertainty about where our enrollment will come in next year. I strongly believe that we will tick up, but by how much is, is uncertain. But in that 5% number, you're, you do not see anything reflected with anything by enrollment increase. We know that the number was off last year, and we've accounted for that with a significant decrease in the maintenance of effort request to the tune of over $1 million. So that's where the, what happened with the kids, how do we adjust for that moving forward? This history, coupled with what Ms. Prince presented, is a true, in our estimation, maintenance of effort. The COLA, the step increase, health insurance, and contractual obligations to open our doors next year. We believe wherever number we come in next year, we'll be able to absorb based on what we received last year. We also did some kind of quick analysis that will provide the board with more information on as we progress kind of through the months of this process. There wasn't any kind of aha of, you know, we could have decreased our classroom teachers by three teachers or four teachers. If you look grade level by grade level, we kind of took a, let's take a teacher away from this grade level or, or that at the elementary level, and there was only one that came in where we could have gone down a teacher, everyone, every other grade would have tipped us up into our, over our maximum or just at our maximum class size, which, again, is, is the reason why, one of the many reasons why folks moved to Falls Church City Public Schools. So wanted to make sure that we were kind of couching in, in history of what was presented before. A lot of what Ms. Prince talked about was what, in addition to maintenance of effort, was the request for city council, and that's what we're really going to engage in with the school board over the next few months, is making sure that whatever we bring forward with regards to enhancements, and again, you all have folks knocking down your door for enhancements to Falls Church City proper. We have the same kind of request from our staff, our parents and our students, so how do we continue to advance what we offer to meet increasing demands, but making sure that those are concretely aligned with our school board's priorities. So I'll pause there for any questions? Ms. Sherwood?
Thank you for this. Oh, wow, that is a little lot. I just wanted to have a quick clarification on Slide 33 when we talk about the reflection on previous transfer needs or requests. That was the December 2024 number, the 8.8%? Is that right, from December 2024?
Correct.
Okay, you're just, I just wanted to make sure we were comparing the same time of year. Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? This is, oh, there we go. Thank you so much for addressing the, the maintenance request, the decrease in it based upon the fewer students that came, because I think that's something that's really difficult to talk about, is that, you know, we budgeted and we funded 160 more students than we actually had come into the schools. And so I appreciate you addressing that through reduction of a million. And is that, I guess I need to come back to that question, but on the students who didn't come in, like, is there any age group that is more prevalent where they didn't show up, meaning like the younger ages we were talking about before? Is it that those families with young kids are moving in that we thought would? Is it people are sitting at just a private school? Was there any one particular area that was lower than we thought?
Yep, great question. Looking at all of our grade level by grade level, where it was projected versus where we actually ended up, Dr. Waters is spot on. We're seeing less, we're seeing more of a gap at the younger ages and less of a gap at the upper ages. So that grade level that I was talking about where we absolutely did not hit the number is kindergarten. So Dr. Waters talking about that younger families with kids, we definitely felt that by way of what the projection number was and where we actually ended up hitting third grade, for example, a little bit different. We actually came two students away from the actual production. So we've actually been having parents' contacts as well, class size for third grade. So it really is the younger the grade levels where we were seeing the more significant gaps.
So in some grades, we have really small classes, and in third grade, we have big classes, so it's just, it's, which is the difficulty every year, but adding 160 and knowing the distribution is particularly difficult this year. I want to come back to my other question later, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll sort it over to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Daye. Okay.
So I was asked to provide just a little bit of a history on the, on the West Falls development and how it has played a role in financing the high school, and I've got just a few slides that'll walk us through on that. And then at the end, I've got just a picture of what's happening on the Womata site and on the Hitt site, just in case there's any questions about that. We've been having a lot of interaction with our neighbors to the north, and we can provide any updates if people have questions about that. Okay, so this is a timeline of some of the key decision points along the way of building the Meridian High School, and this is kind of the long route of the, of the zipper. Now, I will, I will share, back when we were in 2014, I viewed the analogy as, as a crocodile's mouth with really nasty teeth, and we're trying to close the crocodile's mouth, and when Mary Beth started talking about a zipper, everybody said, well, that's a much nicer analogy, let's use the zipper instead. But so, so a couple of key points in the history, the boundary adjustment with Fairfax County allowed the city to do, get two things. One, $20 million in cash for the sale of the water system, and brought the high school into the city limits. And both, both of those two things were critical to building the high school. The school board had put the Meridian High School on the CIP going back in 2006, and it had sort of languished on the, on the CIP because it was such a big number. The cost to finance it was about 15 to 20 cents on the tax rate at the time that it first appeared on the CIP, and it was a big struggle. The school board had put forward the idea of offering a portion of the campus for commercial development to help lower that impact to the taxpayers. And at the same time, we were negotiating with Fairfax County, and so we very much wanted the school to be brought into the city limits so we could control that, and if we wanted to go in that route, we would have the ability to do so, not have to go to Fairfax County for the zoning entitlements, and then ultimately, the tax revenue would stay in the city and not go to Fairfax County. So we worked hard on planning. We came up with a feasibility plan that the school board did, the city did an economic development plan, those two strings kind of came together. We had a plan of finance that we took to the voters in 2017, and it was approved by about 67% of the voters. That included the idea of having that 10 acres be put into private development. Right after the RFP, I mean, right after the referendum, the school board issued an RFP, which resulted in the Gilbane contract to design and build this high school. And essentially, at the same time, we were always about three months behind the schools. Intentionally, we put out our RFP for the 10-acre site. We wanted the schools always to be ahead of and in front of the economic development piece. A couple of key points, we approved the comprehensive agreement and land entitlements. Then the pandemic happened, and there were some changes to the plans, kind of around the, the margins, but we'll talk about some of those when, when the plan comes up, including the Phase 2 part of it. And then the, the school opened in 2021 and, and right kind of in the, in the pandemic year, and, and the, in the winter of 2021, on time and on budget. It's a great accomplishment by the school board and the school staff. And so then that brings us to the present point, and so here are the 99-year ground lease for the 10-acre site. This is sort of the bottom line numbers for what the fiscals are of that 99-year ground lease. And so it's structured with $25.5 million in upfront capitalized lease payments. And then there were some profit sharing provisions that totaled $817,000. Phase 2, which we'll talk about in just a moment, that is a $10 million preset price for Phase 2. It's relevant right now, in the current year's budget, we are assuming that they won't pay the full $10 million, but they'll exercise an option and make a payment of $800,000 to extend their ability to have control over the site and ultimately make that $10 million payment. There's some supplemental rent that continues on and it grows by 3% per year, and that will go on for the full 99-year lease. And, and then, so that's sort of the, the cash totals in this sort of up to 33 is 38 million. Of course, these lease payments continue to, would be in addition to that 38 million. In addition, there's some affordable housing payments that begin in FY '27. So that's some of the, the key provisions that are, we're using right now to pay for the, the debt service on the high school. There's one other thing, the, the agreement has sort of a step up in taxes, property taxes that the West Falls Project pays. We're going into the budget year where we'll get $2 million from the West Falls Project We're going into the budget year where we'll get $2 million from the West Falls Project and that also is part of the plan of finance for, to cover the debt service for the high school. And then we projected that that would come up to 4.2 million once the, that sort of that agreement ends in FY '29. So this is a chart that shows how the $6 million of annual debt service is being covered by the city. So taking these chunks, the city does have, the taxpayers are paying a portion of that debt service, 1.2 million per year. And that was pennies that were added to the tax rate, kind of in early planning phases to sort of build up some capital reserves for the project. And then that has stayed in and how we're financing that $6 million per year. Up to FY '27, we're using those capitalized ground lease payments of 4.7 per year plus the 1.2 million and that covered the full note. In FY '26, the current year, we are using 2.2 million in capitalized ground lease payments because they've stepped down. This dark blue is, is a residual thing from the sale of the water system where we put $9 million of the proceeds of that 20 million into the city's pension fund and lowered the annual required contribution for the pension fund, which benefits school staff who are not in VRS and general government staff. But that is a benefit to the taxpayer which we dedicated to Meridian High School. And then this red is going to be the tax yield that, from the meals, from the property taxes that ultimately will be coming online from West Falls. While that tax yield is sort of stepping up, we are using the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. That debt service came off our books starting in FY '26. And so that's sort of a bridge until the tax yield comes up and does what it's supposed to do to, to continue to fund the high school going forward. You see that 2 million, that 200,000, that's that sort of residual ground lease payment that continues on for the full 99 years. And so that stays in. So one of the things we note is after this, and after, or beginning in FY '29, the 1.8 million Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School debt service will sort of come off our books because we won't be using it as a bridge anymore. And so that, that money, I've sort of in quotes, is available for other purposes in the general government budget or for, you know, for whatever reasons the city council determines. We have in our mind the Gordon Road Triangle and the property yard. It might be a need that we'll, we would have in the future, but that's something that we'll continue to discuss, how that could be redeployed. I think those are some of the, the highlights for how we're covering the $6 million presently and into the future.
Wyatt, one thing I was going to mention, because I think only three of us are around and we made this decision in 2017, is, can you go back to your debt service slide?
Sorry. How did you do that?
So unlike most debt that we take on in Falls Church, this is 30-year debt. So we, we have to pay that 6 million debt service for 30 years, unlike other projects when we took on 20-year debt. That's how we afforded the school we're sitting in. And so when Mary Ellen Henderson rolls off, that was a 20-year bond. The one for the high school is 30 years.
Yep. That's a, I think it's the only time in the city's history that we've ever issued 30-year term debt.
Wyatt, geez, that was a lot. So I also wanted just to piggyback on all this is, one of the reasons that city council asked Wyatt to also bring, talk about this tonight is that, you know, we do hear, and I know the school board hears about people complaining, oh, the traffic, the construction, you know, on and on and on. And, you know, a lot of us, you know, I've lived in the city 16 years. I know some of my friends have lived here longer, but a lot of people don't even remember the old George Mason High School and what a disaster that was. And, you know, we could not have built this beautiful building without having that commercial revenue coming in. Our little city couldn't have, that's too heavy to lift. It would have bankrupted our city. So we just asked that you all partner with us and also even we, we even heard it from principals and, and teachers about sort of, oh, this construction, just reminding people like we, this helped us, you know, keep, keep a healthy financial situation and be able to build this amazing high school. And so just work, you know, let's all work together to get that message out.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I also want to just emphasize for the general government staff, the school staff, having people come to and from this campus safely is just, it's like the thing that keeps us up at night that we worry about and we want to always have eyes on and be paying attention to, that is a big one. And we know we've got a big parade of students that are crossing Haycock Road every morning and every evening. And just having that whole route is something we're paying close attention to. We want to make sure that we are making sure that that route is as safe as it can be. It is, Haycock's a busy road and, and it always has been. And, and so it's not a new problem, but it, and in fact, now we've got much more dedicated crosswalk spaces and well-lit signals to help with that crossing. And it just, it just remains something that's very important that we execute that well.
Can I ask a question before we?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a clarifying question. For those of us who are not finance people, can you explain what it means that the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School debt service is available, like in the layperson terms?
So this is, what it means is that 1.8 million is still in the tax rate. So now, in some respects, I can, I'll tell you that we could have grown sort of the general, the, the, some of the tax yield in FY '26 was actually used in the school and general government operating budget. And we used the 1.8 million instead of some of the tax yield from West Falls. And so in some respects, it's kind of a, an accounting idea. It's sort of a, it's a notion that we can keep in our mind, but we did benefit from that last year and it's right now being sort of deployed as a bridge until the full tax yield comes online in FY '29.
So then if I'm understanding correctly, we have paid off any age?
That's right.
But we are still collecting money on, based on that motor proof bond and we are putting it down towards pay.
It's more informal than that. It's just that the tax rate still is, is high enough to cover that 1.8 million. And so come FY '29, there'll be a decision that can be made. Does the city council want to lower the tax rate for that or deploy those dollars elsewhere in the budget to meet community needs? That's a decision that'll be available to the city council in '29.
Can I ask a follow-up, Wyatt? I just, I had the same question as Bethany. So is the, that blue is basically like operating revenue by another name?
That's right.
Because you're just sticking it there in a different blue color as a bridge?
And that's totally accurate. Like, we are kind of notionally carving this out because it is a fact that the Mary Ellen Henderson debt service came, came offline last year. And I just want to be transparent on kind of how we're thinking about how that money's being deployed right now. Yeah.
I just have a couple of follow-ons. One is that you didn't mention that the interest rate we have on this high school is like the lowest in the history of interest rates in the United States of America, right? We just, the way it all came together, we ended up being able to finance this with a very, like, 2% rate?
Yeah, 2.1.
Yeah. And it was so low that we, we're going to do it in two tranches and take out the first chunk early and then six months later, take out the second chunk. And Kirabawa convinced us that we should do the whole thing at one time because those interest rates were never going to be as low before. So that's another thing that we're all benefiting from. And when the referendum passed, we told people that tax rate might go up 8 cents. Was it 8 cents or 7 cents?
15.
I had it 15.
15?
Yeah.
All right, 15 cents.
Well, let's see, during the referendum, as part of the plan of finance, we had a smaller number. If we didn't have the plan of finance, it would have been 15.
Okay. But I think it was like 7 or 8 cents when we were telling people, please vote yes for this. So, and the tax rate hasn't gone up that much. And a good, a big reason why is because of the commercial development here and throughout the city. So when I was campaigning this year, one of the questions I asked people was, do you know why we have all this development in Falls Church? And I was really surprised at the number of people who had no idea that it was all intentionally so that we can afford this school and the other schools that keep our city going and are like the golden egg that we're financing here. So I think that's just super important for people to keep remembering over and over is that we didn't just develop for development's sake. We developed so that we can afford the nice things that we want in the state of Falls Church.
All right. So I want to talk about the phase two provisions that are in the comprehensive agreement. So there's the D3 section, which is kind of, if you picture where the mural is on the garage, that is, that land that was currently is being used as staging for the construction of the senior building is slated for just over 150,000 square feet of residential uses and 6,400 square feet of retail uses on the ground floor. Kind of more significantly, the B4 lot is slated for 250,000 square feet of office space. So a building that actually would be slightly larger than the office building that you see right there would be here. In the agreement that they would have to build parking, they'd have to build structured parking to replace any parking that the school system lost with the redevelopment of that parcel. The terms of phase two are a $10 million payment to the city or appraised value, whichever is higher. So there's a process by which you get, you know, multiple appraisals and, and then sort of pick the, the price in the middle if we wanted to go that route or it would be, the minimum is 10 million. June 2nd, 2026 is the outside closing date. So they would either need to pay us $10 million and, and begin the entitlement process for the site plans for these sites, or they would extend to buy some additional time. And they're allowed to do that three times with a payment of $800,000, which really is a credit to that 10 million so that the final payment would be 10 million minus those If they do exercise and proceed with it, there would be a site plan process. There would be a sort of a deep engagement with the community on kind of what these buildings look like, how they function. But they do have entitlements for the numbers that I mentioned, 150, it's like 156,000 square feet of retail, of residential uses with retail on the ground floor and, and about 254,000 of office use. So that's what they're entitled for, the site plan process, which goes all the way through the city council, is the, the land use action that they would need to, to pursue.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
And this one, you mentioned that they can take some school parking, but it has to be replaced?
That's right.
How long will the parking be offline?
So that's kind of, that would, like, that's a detail that we've never really resolved at this point, but that would be a site plan question and we would work through with the school, school board, school staff on how to answer that question. But I don't have an answer right now.
So they could walk away though at any point. So if they decided they don't want to move forward with D3 or B4, they could say that we want to end that contract. And so then is there, does the city have a plan for what, would we want to do something else with the land? Would that be a community discussion or what would happen if they did decide to walk away?
So I think we, we've had no indication that they want to walk away, so I don't think that's likely. But I think it is likely that they will want some additional time for the market to change. And that's my read of the situation. But, so yes, if we wanted to change how this, with the land use designation is for that, we would need to go through a process to do that.
And so if they were to come back and say like, actually, you know, we, like, office building doesn't make sense in this economy or this, this time, they would have to go through a pretty lengthy process to potentially change that use and they'd have to get approval.
That's right.
For the $10 million payment, that is still just to lease the land. We would get the land back in 99 years.
So that is actually for either 99-year ground lease or a fee simple. So it's the same price for, for this residential component. This is, no question would be a ground lease. But this has some optionalities, whether that would be fee simple condo or whether it would be apartments under a ground lease.
Okay.
Or apartments on top of a ground lease.
Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. No worries. I did have a question about B4 usage as well about the parking. Is there any understanding or written into the plan about the use that the school will be for free? Or is there an understanding that will be, that we'll have to pay parking? How is that?
No, that would be, it would be free parking. It would be sort of this, try to get back to the status quo ante so that the schools would not be paying for the parking structure.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify, I know you said you don't have any reason to think they are interested in walking away, but what, what would you see as the timeline for when they might start showing interest in, in moving forward? Is it, would it just be in June or would you, would you expect to start hearing from them, you know, earlier in the winter?
So under the comprehensive agreement, they have to notify us what they're planning to do three months prior to this June date. So that's sort of, we know, we'll know by then. I think that we will be in contact sooner than that and start to have some discussions. And so our commitment would be to share information as we have it with the school board and, and continue on.
So it would be, it would be a long conversation. And just to be clear to the public who are watching this, isn't something that's definitely going to happen or something that would happen quickly?
That's right. And the fastest it would go is, you know, through the site plan process, that is a lengthy process. And, you know, so if you kind of think about big, major, complex site plans, those, those take a while.
So those seniors who just painted their parking lot, you're, you're fine. Your spot's not going anywhere.
I think that's right. Yeah.
So do they have an option to exercise a portion of phase two? So maybe exercise for D3 but not for B4?
So the comprehensive agreement does have kind of long sections about that and I probably shouldn't quote them because they're fairly complicated. But they're, this, I will say, just for context, this is very difficult and this is relatively easy from a developer's perspective. And so the comprehensive agreement sort of understood that and there, there is some, they're, they're treated differently. But it's, I don't think I should probably quote kind of all exactly how that plays out because you have to kind of go through some pretty dense text to sort of parse those, those provisions out.
But there is a way that they can?
There is a way. And if they were to, to do kind of the easy, there is a reappraisal process that, you know, that, that 10 million number gets revisited. And so that would be part of it. I would argue however, I'll go ahead and stake a claim, I don't believe there should be much decrease in price because this is from a, this is, this is a hard thing to finance and build. And so really the value has always been here and that, that would be the city's position on that. There really shouldn't be a significant decrease, if any, on that $10 million price if it were to end up just being this. That's kind of, you know, my belief on, on real estate. Now, I will say this, it was always really important for, for the city council to have a, a strong commercial component. And so it has always been very important to the city council that we get that commercial revenue and the tax base that comes with, with office. And that's why the, the city has kind of fought for that from the beginning in all of our negotiations with the developer. All right.
During that comprehensive agreement, that was signed with the city, but there is an MOU with the school board, right?
That's right.
For B4. That lays out, yeah, yeah. You signed that one. That lays out exactly what the steps are for the school board and for the schools and what will, you know, what will be maintained and what won't. But that's all in there.
Yeah.
And in, in the school board document.
And there's, so there's a, in that, in the whole construct, there is an obligation that parking is provided. Kind of where and how has not been determined. And that's, and those details can be quite important.
Wyatt, just a quick question. To what extent is the city's long-term financial planning based upon the $10 million payment in 2029?
So it really comes down to the, the 800,000, like, these dollars are right now in our FY '26 budget and they're part of our overall capital reserve forecast. And so really where this impacts us the most now is in the future-facing capital improvements program. It is not that this 10 million, we're not counting on for the, for, to cover our debt service for the high school. That problem has been solved. The 10 million really be- The 10 million really becomes important for our future-facing CIP, and it is baked into that future-facing CIP. When the City Council reviews its, its capital reserves, we do have this money in those capital reserve projections.
And just to clarify, give us some examples of what's in the CIP. Does it include the sewer expansion?
No, that's, that's in the sewer fund, so this is all in the general government side of things. So, this is kind of for everything that's in the capital improvements program today. And so, those are for facilities improvements, for park improvements, for school improvements, for transportation improvements.
I also just wanted to say that there, you can describe it better than I, but the CDA, the Community Development Authority, so the roads and services utilities that are on that 10-acre site are being paid by the businesses that are building on that site. They're not being paid for by the taxpayer.
That's right.
So, that's an important distinction as well, when people are looking at that development and thinking about how much it's costing the city, you know, the street that's going to go all the way through the metro, like, that we will benefit from is being paid by the developer.
That's right. All right. If there aren't any more questions about that, we can come back to it. If there are, I'll just speak briefly. There are changes happening on the Wamata site, and we had a meeting on Tuesday, right before the Thanksgiving holiday, with Wamata, just so there could be good communication about impacts to the, the surface parking, which is going away now. The garage will still be available to the public, and so students that are parking in this area will still be able to use the garage. They will be closing the first floor of the garage starting December 15th, but people can get past that construction and still use the upper decks of that garage, and we'll just continue to try to stay in close contact with Wamata. I don't know, Alicia, if there's anything you want to share with the, with the group on those discussions?
Sure, thank you. As many of you know, because you have students who may be in our high school, we also have been lucky enough to secure some additional parking spots via ABM across the street, and so 100 additional spots for, at a cost of $300 for the remainder of the school year. So, that's also an option, you know, we want to do all that we can to make sure that students have opportunities. We know many of them are extracurricular activities that last into the evening, and so want to make sure we provide that. We are very grateful to you, Mr. Shields, for all the support that you give us to try to navigate this process, and also to our partnerships with HIT, who also have been really thoughtful as we are trying to navigate, supporting our students through this change.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Alicia. And then, lastly, kind of the thing that you see being built next door, that's the HIT headquarters, and this is a graphic of it. If people haven't seen it, this is Mustang Alley going towards Meridian High School, and this building does have a solar canopy that will cover the entire building, and it will house, in addition to HIT Contracting's corporate headquarters, it will also have Virginia Tech's National Center for Smart Construction, and so we'll be able to continue our relationship with Virginia Tech, and we would love for there to be opportunities for student learning in this building as well. I think that was always envisioned, to keep that partnership with Virginia Tech into the future. So, I'll stop there, and happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask a question about the site? Can you tell me what those roads are? Like, is that the road that's going to go all the way through the metro?
Yes, this is West Falls Station Boulevard, and so this part of it, in front of, you know, in front of the commons, is, has already been built, and this is what will be built soon, and that will connect all the way to West Falls Station.
And what's being built on this side of the road?
So, over here, on this side of West Falls Station Boulevard, is a residential building with retail on the ground floor.
And that is or is not in Falls Church City?
That is not in Falls Church City.
Thank you.
So, the one building that, I guess it would be like right here, is the senior building. That is in the city of Falls Church, and that's the last component that's being constructed in West Falls.
For now.
For now, until Phase Two. That's right. They have it topped out, so it is as tall as it's going to be, and now the skin will start to, skin is already being put on it now.
Wyatt, this is a little bit off-topic, but while you're up there, we did receive a letter from the Meridian PTSA today about SROs.
Yeah.
And I know that we had a conversation that was very enlightening to us at the Government Operations Committee meeting last week. I was hoping you could perhaps share some context with our school board colleagues to help them understand sort of the landscape of what we're going through with the police department right now.
Sure. And so, Chief Bard is, I think, in regular contact with Superintendent Dade also, just to keep their plans together, make sure that we're operating our schools safely. We have, you know, in a small police department, we have 11 vacancies in the department, so that's about 25%. That's fairly typical for what you see at Fairfax and Arlington as well, so this just is a tough environment to bring people into public safety. So, we, filling up, we have vacancies kind of on our patrol as well, but filling up these SRO positions is a real high priority. We've had some candidates who are like right on the cusp that we thought were coming, and lateral hires would have worked out great, and they took jobs elsewhere, but it is a high priority. So, in the meantime, I know that the police department and the schools are in close touch, and if there are needs up here, we will certainly meet them as best we can. But we do, we plan to have an SRO up here as soon as we possibly can.
And I think what was also interesting that you talked to us about, which I know our, our school board colleagues can understand, is the amount that a starting police officer is paid in Arlington is quite substantially higher than what we are able to pay ours, so that makes it difficult, just like we have the same issue with trying to compete for teachers and things. Is that accurate, would you say?
Yes, it is. So, and David will speak to this a little bit, or was planning to speak to this a little bit, in terms of kind of budget drivers for us, but we, all of the area public safety agencies are announcing big pay increases for their staff because they are dealing with these staffing shortfalls, just like we are. We made some changes in the last 18 months to help address that, but we've been leapfrogged again, and there's a big pay differential between Arlington County and the city right now on public safety. So, we're studying it, we'll have better data on it, and then we'll be coming to council with some possible solutions. And that will be a feature of next year's budget, I believe.
Thank you. Can I just do one more myth busting, and that is, school board members and school staff may hear complaints about that we didn't build enough parking, and there used to be more parking and there's not, and I just want to confirm to everyone that if you get that complaint, it's just, it seems like it should be true, but it's not. There's actually more parking spots now than there were when we had George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson. They're just configured differently. We used to park all those school buses in the back, and there wasn't parking for cars, but there are, from what I counted, there's 40 more spots now than there were before. We just don't have the next-door spots that people are going to use. But when my kids went here, I think when Dave Snyder's kids went here, it was, parking was a stinker then, and it is a stinker now, so it hasn't gotten worse just because we have a different configuration. The 40 more spots with same kids.
Well, and this senior class, though, is that big class, so they'll be gone, so hopefully we'll have more parking next year.
The rat in the sink. Yeah.
All right, I think it's David Seau's turn, and so if we could just queue up the next presentation. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so this goes for more.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for.
Even a little bit, I just thought you were out of shot.
Or was I out of shot the whole time? That's good.
Thanks, John.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, everyone. I am four weeks into my role, and I was given the pleasure of trying to project our, where we're heading, so, but with that said, wanted to keep the, the structure similar to the way my predecessor has made, has presented in the past. So, I have four agendas topics here. First is the economic outlook, which I know we touched on with earlier presentations. Then we'll get into my preliminary revenue projections, qualify the budget cost drivers, and then finally a review of our budget calendar. So, that being said, there were, there's a lot of data that is out there, and a lot of them tells what I found to be either one end of the extreme or the other end of the extreme. So, I just wanted to highlight two different ends of, of the outlooks, and so the first one is, is with inflation, and so based off of what you see here, coming out of the COVID high inflation rates, we've had relatively stable inflation for the past two years, and so while there has been a lot of other things that have happened most recently, which may not be reflected in the inflation, one could argue, there's nothing to see here, folks, business as usual, the economy's going to be just fine. But then going into the next slide here is the other end of the extreme, and so you can see here, I have three different areas of focus. So, first is kind of the national average, which has been relatively stable in terms of unemployment, but then you'll see here within Virginia and within Falls Church, it's seen a much bigger increase, and I think, especially for the city of Falls Church, it's now exceeded the national average. So, we're going from 3% to 4.6%, that's over a 50% growth from August 2024 to August 2025. So, one could look at this and say, oh my gosh, this economy is failing, everything is falling, everyone, you know, we got to save as much money as we can. So, you know, all of that to say is, you know, there's just a lot of news, data that's out there, and the only thing after going through all of that is that in today's economy, uncertainty is the only certainty that we have here. And so, you know, as we look at the revenue projections, I felt that it was better to give a range, so that way we can capture both kind of the, the negative, the pessimistic side, while still accounting for the optimistic, the high-range side. And so, that being said, you know, the first task was, being new to my job, I wanted to understand what our neighboring jurisdictions were predicting. Just being new to the role, I thought that would be a really great data set to reference, and so from here, I've, I've seen what Alexandria, Arlington, and Fairfax City has projected, and it's pretty much a very similar story. You know, I think for residential, just across the board, just Northern Virginia, just continues to be very strong regardless of our kind of economic outlook. The one key notable difference is, is on the personal property tax, and that's really driven by the initiatives that our Commissioner of Revenue has implemented. So, he's going out there and he's trying to find residents that live in the city that may not have registered their vehicles, and so this is a great, great news, it's a one-time lift, and the hope is that we'll continue to have these residents paying their, their property taxes. Outside of that, you know, sales, meals, other taxes has been relatively flat for the most part. I think Arlington is very pessimistic with their projections, so, but even still, with all of that factored in, you know, I'm predicting for our total tax revenue, a growth of 2.9%. And again, that's primarily, primarily driven based off of the residential assessed value and the personal property tax. So, moving here, so we dive a little bit deeper into the property values, we're currently projecting a 6% assessed value growth from 2025 to 2026, and whereas our multifamily and commercial is going to be flat to negative growth. And so, that's, that's, again, across the jurisdictions, you know, commercial, I think Arlington is projecting double digits. It's going to be a very tough time for our commercial properties to experience any sort of growth in this economic environment. And so, in here for the personal property, as I mentioned, I'm projecting close to about $1 million growth, and I want to also temper expectations with this growth in that, you know, again, with the uncertain economy, the federal workforce reductions, and another key item is that the EV tax credits have also expired, and electric vehicles are one of the most highest value vehicles. That's what's temporary, the full $1 million worth of growth going into 2027. And so, again, until I get more data to better understand how we're trending, there was a little bit of just conservatism built into the 2027 number there. So, now we get into the range, and so this is the cone, and so just based upon what I've seen historically, I applied a 5% both growth and decline based off of our 2025 actuals to better understand where my revenue projections were falling under. And so, in this case, I kept the 27 numbers flat to 26 because, again, there's just too much uncertainty to properly predict where we're going to land, but at least within the cone, you know, I'm still relatively in the midpoint of where, where we are, and again, it's a 5% growth annually, so it's 5% in 2026 and then 10% in 2027. And so, you can see here, sales tax is relatively in the middle within that, that projection. So, going into meals tax, again, meals tax was, we were spending, we were experiencing some tremendous growth, but again, with a lot of this economic uncertainty, you can actually still see that I'm still projecting on the higher end of this, this range that I have here, coming in at 6 million, where the high is 6.4 million and the low is 5.2 million. So, coming in a little bit higher than, than what the midpoint would be, which would be 5.8 million there, and it's, again, similar story with our business licenses, we're coming in at 5.9 million, again, at the higher end of the cone, which is 6.2 million that you see here. So, when we put all of that together, I'm projecting a range of a pessimistic low forecasted increase of about 600,000 for new tax revenue and a potential high of about 4.3 million, and that's, I think, a good range for where tax revenue will fall in. I think looking at the Q2 numbers will be a very good indicator of how better these numbers will shape out, but just based upon the limited data that I had, at that point, this is, this is the range that the team and I felt in, so. So, now we get into the non-tax revenue, and so in here, I wanted to highlight some of the, the good times that we experienced historically, and so in here, in the past two years, we've experienced very high investment income, and so just to give a little bit of a story here is, back in 2021, the federal government gave us ARPA money, and at the same time, with the influx of cash, the feds also began to increase the interest rates. So, we experienced very high returns, interest on the cash that we had on hand, but now we're pretty much on the downturn as we're using up all of our ARPA funds. As interest rates are coming down, we're, we're now experiencing this, this gap in the additional investment income that we were generating for the past few years. So, I'm projecting about, we're going from 1.9, knowing that we had budgeted for this year, down to about 10. year, down to about 600,000. Again, we just don't have the same amount of cash that we once had. And on top of that, interest rates are going to continue to go down. And again, that number could be subject to change just depending on how things shake this out with the Fed, the interest rates, and also the cash that we had on hand. So all of that, you know, I also wanted to parse out, you know, so that was about a 1.3 billion production that we're going to have from 2026. But there's also some other smaller items, I think most notably, the cameras that we have. Again, as people, residents are familiar with where the cameras are, we expected this kind of, this tail off of the additional revenue from the fines. And then there's just other sort of tiny amounts that totaled about 300,000. All of that to say is that in terms of the other revenue not associated with tax, I'm projecting a 1.9 million dollar increase. So if you were to net the two, and again, I took the 3.1 million based off the mid-number in my projections, I'm only projecting a 1.6 million dollar increase, which is only a 1.3% growth in revenue. Now moving on to the budget cost drivers. So the way I kind of classify the cost drivers is I categorize as, you know, what are the increases that we can control? And then what are the cost increases that we just absolutely have to pay? And so in here, I call it variable increases of what we can control, fixed increases are what we can. And so I wanted to provide, focus more on the fixed increases. And I think just as the, in Dr. Day's presentation, he calls it maintenance of effort. I call it, you know, these are just obligated increases that everyone is experiencing across the board. And so benefits is also a big one. We're projecting a 10% increase, which will be about 320,000. And then we also have our WAMADA contracts and also our jurisdictional contracts that, again, we're just projecting to increase for 2027. And so these are just contracts where we know we're going to have to pay a much higher bill that needs to be accounted for in our budget. But the variable increases, so in terms of, you know, compensation, benefits, non-personnel, you know, that is more discretionary and can be controlled just depending on where our revenues land. So all of that to say is, I just built a high-level model just to kind of, for me to get a sense of where we're at, there were a lot of assumptions built into this, this budget gap projection. But in short, I'm kind of tackling everything, putting everything here. You know, for example, schools were just based upon 50% tax revenue sharing. Again, this has nothing to do with what the school is asking for, but just for just an estimation purpose, same concept with the general administration. But to really see where we're falling in terms of whether we have a budget surplus, a budget gap. And so you can see based upon just these rough numbers, we're, we're going to be experiencing a budget gap of anywhere between about 5.4 million to 2.7 million. And it's again, just to give us a good starting point to work off of. And as we begin the budget guidance and budget development process, you know, what is that target that we need to be aiming towards in terms of, you know, getting this budget gap down to zero? And then so, of course, for me, anytime you see a gap, well, what are some of the opportunities that we can pursue? And I think this was also a request from Mayor Hardy about what are my revenue levels? And so here, this just lists, you know, if you increase real estate tax by a penny, personal property tax by a penny, you know, what's the additional revenue that we can generate? And again, these are just, again, opportunities or tools that are within our toolbox to help reduce the budget gap that we have. And I know that's very unpopular, but again, it just arms you with this information of, okay, well, if I increase a penny here, a penny there, how much will I get? And so this was a rough estimate that the team and I had put together in trying to address the budget gap. And then the last piece is also, we also had discussions related to the commercial and industrial tax. And now there's also restrictions on how the additional tax revenue from the CNI tax can be used. But this is also another tool within that toolbox to help reduce the budget gap that was dealt. So I think that may be it, yes. And so the last piece is the budget calendar that we have outlined here. And I think that may be it. So if there's any questions? Yeah.
Thank you so much for this presentation. One thing that was not addressed and something that I've been watching closely is the trash collection issue. And just, I wanted to see if there was any shortfall in what the anticipation was for people signing up for their trash collection and if, you know, how that's affecting the overall projections.
Yes, I'll, I'll have to then take a look at the trash collection and get back to what that.
Okay. I just, because I, I know that there were, there was talk that the schools would be made whole because that was being taken out of the tax system and made into a fee service. And so just making sure that, that was being looked at.
It is. And so the kind of the way that works, because the FY26 budget was adopted with revenue sharing, and then after the fact, it was, it was changed, the schools kind of structurally were made whole because of the way it was done, sort of the sequencing of steps. And we, I'll be happy to sit down with the school staff, just walk everybody through that in detail and make sure everybody's comfortable with exactly what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is, is I think people will understand when they see it that way. And then I think in terms of the transition from tax rate to solid waste fee, there is no kind of risk to that in the FY27 budget. For the FY28 budget, if we have a big shift to the FY, to the smaller bins, then we might have to adjust the fee. But we've got, you know, full 18 months to evaluate that and see if we need to make that adjustment.
Okay, but you're feeling pretty comfortable where the fee stands in order to not have any significant loss?
That's right. The schools are 100% held harmless for the shift to that fee.
Great, thank you.
No, you can go ahead of me.
I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the commercial assessed value. I know that obviously, I know a lot about Arlington's decrease in its assessed value. I understand that we are flat, but we've brought in so much more business, even if we are flat as a percentage, you know, growth percentage, why aren't we seeing more revenue?
Yeah, so it relates to commercial, we are hiring a real estate assessor, so that was an open position. So we were working on hiring someone on board. In the meantime, we're outsourcing a contract to, for someone to do the commercial assessed value. So conservatively, we kept it flat. But once we have the real estate assessor on board, who's actually, we're expecting to start this year, I'll have a much better determination. But yes, that's, that's one area that there could be some potential for growth, but again, we kept it flat just to.
Do you think, do you anticipate we'll know that before budget decisions this spring?
I believe so, since we do have the contracting company to do that for us, so the short answer is.
Great, thank you.
So I have a question, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. On the budget gap slide, that, that budget gap assumes the 6% AV growth in residential, like the taxpayer absorbing that. So like when I ran this just like for play numbers, to understand that if we had median home value of a million dollars and that million-dollar home had a 6% growth, that taxpayers', like annual taxes would increase by $711, even if we kept the tax rate equal because of the 6% AV growth. And so the budget gap that we're seeing assumes like the taxpayer says, you know, paying the additional $711 to counteract the, you know, revenues not coming in or the revenue shortfalls we anticipate. And even with that additional $711 out of pocket, we're like 4.1 million dollars in the hole, so to speak.
Yeah, and I think the biggest driver is the, the other revenue, so I mean specifically investment income.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's what's really driving the, the higher budget gap that you're seeing here.
Okay.
So my person question again. So I hear people talking about, we have all these new businesses coming online, right? We have all these new buildings coming online. Help me understand why we're forecasting other revenue going down, not up, even just by virtue of the number of new restaurants coming online, new grocery stores coming online in the next six to 12 months?
Yeah, I, I think a lot has to do with, I think, in Dr. Waters' previous presentation with the federal workforce, there being a decline. You saw unemployment rates are, are much higher. My wife is a federal employee, so I know during the shutdown, we did not eat out, right? And it changed a lot of our spending habits. So all that to say is there's just a lot of uncertainty. And so it's difficult for, for me to project at this moment, where we're going to land in 2027. And I think even coming out of COVID, you know, a lot of the spending behavior changed, maybe temporarily. But that's the kind of, where I don't know where a lot of these outside economic political decisions has an impact to how our revenue is going to look.
So then if I'm understanding, right now, what you're projecting is essentially the new businesses coming online are what is keeping us roughly flat?
Yeah.
As opposed to creating growth or causing a loss if we didn't have all these new, a bigger loss if we didn't have these new businesses coming online?
Yeah, and that's, but I also want to point out that, you know, with the cone, right? That's kind of a range. So I'm not, I want to make sure that we're not committing to one number. I know for projection purposes, I wanted to showcase a number. But yes, there is a range. And so there's opportunity to go above, you know, in this case, business license, to go above that 5.9 million, right? We could get up all the way to 6.2 million. But again, it's hard for me based off current data to predict where we land. And so that's where I settle with the range.
Thank you for including that range, it's helpful.
One thing that might be helpful is going to the, the regional benchmark slide. David, I really like the inclusion of that. So Bethany, one additional data point that's helpful is, our demographics in terms of federal workers is actually pretty similar to Arlington's. 16% of our employees are federal workers. And usually the stat is probably one-fifth, there's two to three contractors. So that's half of the workforce is tied to the federal government. And so the factors that David talked about, that impact us pretty acutely. And so that's why you see Arlington actually is pretty negative on sales, meals, and other taxes that are those indicators of consumer behavior. So again, to your point, if we weren't seeing the growth that we had in all those new businesses, we'd probably look more like Arlington. Arlington also has declining commercial vacant, has declining commercial revenue because of their vacancies. They're like 20% vacancy with all their office buildings not being filled up. And so they have a lot of headwinds. We're in a better spot than our neighbors because of that growth. Thank you.
So the, the residential assessments, I'm trying to get, understand it a little bit better. Do you have a sense of how much of this 6% is from year-over-year of the same property versus redevelopment of residential lots, which obviously, you redevelop a lot, it's going from about 800,000 or 2.5 million in assessment?
Yeah, that I don't have the current data, but I can go back to my real estate team and follow up with you on getting you the, that information. But short answer is, I'm not too certain how much of it is based off new development, but I could definitely go back and find out.
Just for a little bit of history, I think last year in residential, just in single-family homes, about 0.5% of the overall increase of residential, single-family home detached AV increase was due to new construction. So 0.5% probably isn't too far off.
Probably about the same.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Just trying to look forward to the, onto the budget calendar and wondering if you, what other data points you'll be looking for in the spring to help you fine-tune these projections? Like at what point in your timeline are, will there be like significant data points for you?
Yeah, I think the most current one that I'm interested in is to see how October comes in, because I think a lot of the, the things that we discussed, heard about would be a great starting point. And then to kind of see how we continue going into Q2, so November, December. So it's, it's really just monitoring it in real time and making sure that any major fluctuations or, or changes to what we were expecting, you know, is accounted for and communicated so that we could properly reflect. So there isn't a specific set of time where I'm going to say, yep, now's the time to go take a snapshot. It's going to be done in, in real time as the data comes in. Well, thank you very much, everyone.
So that ends our presentations and unless I've missed anything on the agenda, I haven't, have I? So budget guidance is next. And so we, I don't know, Mayor Hardy, if we want to sort of shift the format or just sort of keep it as a.
I mean, the school board is welcome to hang around, but I think, given what we discussed last Monday, given what we discussed last Monday, I think council decided that we wanted to do budget guidance in the room while we're here. And our school board friends are welcome to stay with us, or you're welcome to go. And then Wednesday, we would look at it in the mayor's meeting, so that come December 8th, when we adopt, it's not a surprise to anyone. Do you want to take a quick break at 9:00? Do people want to just, I think you want? Okay, keep going. Bring up guidance, I guess last year's guidance, I think is the starting point.
So if the council would like, we could just take it paragraph by paragraph?
Okay. So in the preamble, "The city council seeks an FY 2027 budget development process that advances the city vision, council strategic priorities and initiatives, and comprehensive plan, supports the city's excellent schools and excellent general government services, and adheres to adopted fiscal policies to keep city finances on sound footing. City Falls Church is committed to providing valuable public services that promote a high quality of life and equity for all community members and are delivered in a cost-effective manner." So are there any suggested edits to the preamble?
I think it should remain the same.
Okay. Paragraph two then. On FY 2026, I think we could update some of this. "Completion of the major developments is projected to provide higher economic growth and associated revenue. Along with this economic growth, the city is also experiencing significant population and student enrollment growth, as many as subject to extensive planning over the past 10 years. In addition to this planned growth, we're in the same environment as our neighbors with increasing costs, WAMADA funding increases, catching up with deferred maintenance, and a highly competitive labor market."
Can we just edit that in light of the federal?
Can we just say uncertainty is the only certainty?
So I think with the themes that have been articulated tonight, we can just up, sort of rewrite this paragraph aligned with those themes. Is there recurrence on that?
Yeah.
So with these and other considerations in mind, FY 26 budget guidance is as follows.
One, "Continue the spirit of cooperation and collaboration between the general government and the schools in the development of the annual budget and capital improvements program." Are there any changes to this?
No.
Okay. Two, "In light of projected growth and assessed value of real estate and its associated financial burden on homeowners, the council desires to hold steady or reduce the tax rate, but is also aware that in order to meet core government and public education needs, a tax rate increase may be required. Throughout the budget process, the council endeavor to determine the appropriate tax rate to match the core government and public education needs of the community and may consider setting aside tax revenues for contingencies. The council and school board will continue to remain in contact."
So basically, it's open every option there is. Keep it the same, lower the tax rate, or increase the tax rate.
This is what I call last year's.
The non-guidance guidance.
The non-guidance guidance.
That it's accurate.
Okay. Can I have it? It kind of matches the cone that Mr. Sev showed us, that, you know, if we, we could mention the low, middle, and high projections. If we come in high, X would happen. If we come in middle, X would happen. If we come in low, X would happen. X would happen. If we come in middle, X would happen. If we come in low, X would happen.
Yeah, and I remember, I think it was actually Mary Beth who, who added the line in there about the tax rate increase. So, I just, I think it covers all of our bases. I think it works.
Yeah, it's good. It's just, we can't eliminate the tax. It keeps us from doing that, which we will not.
There you go.
I was just going to say, my reaction to it, like, this year in particular, is that the first sentence of two is sort of silly. You know, like, it just sort of feels like we should, in a narrative form, say something about, we recognize the tax burden on people but need to ensure that we're fully funding, you know, core government services and school needs, right, or maintaining the school's focus on its budget. And so, I, I don't know whether there's a way, you know, throughout the budget process, to determine the appropriate tax rate piece of it should really be the focus of number two, more than the rate increase or decrease. Like, I'd rather put the second sentence together with an acknowledgement of tax burden, but the unfortunate, like, costs that we are facing in a budgetary environment that's particularly uncertain and won't see the level of revenues that we've maybe been used to experiencing.
So, one concept that we started using last year was what the median homeowner tax burden would be, and whether we could match that with what CPI was. So, I think we said, could we limit the median homeowner's tax impact to $500, which I think was, is that right, Wyatt? Which was maybe the median impact of whatever that number was. But like an actual, instead of a percentage that we just decided in our head, was actually try to put a dollar impact on there. I think that was a helpful concept for many of us actually to think about what we want the burden to be, to build off Aaron's point about what the burden should be on homeowners. Do we know what that is?
Talk about tying it to CPI. Our, our, our overall increase in assessed value far exceeds the national increase in assessed value. And so, the impact is on the tax.
So, single-family homeowners' real estate bills comprise 40% of the total revenues the city collects. So, it is, it's kind of the foundation of city budget. And it is helpful if, if there's a little bit more clarity on that. Rather than tying it to CPI, because, you know, that, one, we won't really know what that...
I'm not suggesting to tie it to CPI, just a consciousness that CPI has been around 3%.
That's right.
And thinking about that as a goal, where you, you know, you try to keep your expense increases to 3%.
So, if it were expressed as a target at X percent, the council then would determine what that percent is, you know, 3%, 4%, then that would be, for that big chunk of revenue, would send that signal. Then the other components of revenue, such as other business taxes and things like that, becomes a swing that, as David was describing, we're going to try to keep everybody as well informed as we can about where, the direction that those are going in.
Mediums.
Oh, God, that's... The uncertainty is really around, like, the sales, the meals tax, and those things. Like, we feel pretty good about what residential AV increases are, right? And so, if council were comfortable kind of putting a number out there, like, for the median homeowner, this is what we feel comfortable targeting. And then the cone is really for all those other things that we don't have control over.
That's right. So, I think that's an environment where, that's always eventually where the city council kind of ends up thinking about, you know, budget adoption. And so, I think it is kind of, it is helpful if that signal is sent early on. And then, once you have all the facts about what the consequences are to adhering to that, then the council might go in a different direction.
I think the, the way this is written right now, kind of just talks about one tax rate, as if that's the only thing. But the, and the personal, the real estate tax rate is, you know, three-quarters of the revenue from taxes. But I think we need to clarify that it's tax rates, that we are, you know, we may hold real estate taxes steady, but maybe we have other rates that maybe we can work with. So, I think we need to be able to clear which thing, which tax rates we're talking about, what we're talking about. Or you could just put in plural on some of these.
Well, it could be something like, you know, send a signal in terms of what you think the upper bounds are of what you would find acceptable for, for homeowners' tax bill, and then say, and provide other options for alternative revenues. Kind of could leave that a little bit open, and we would take the time between now and then to study those options. That's, you know, David presented in his presentation the levers of different revenues that are, you know, under state authority, we can adjust. They all have their pluses and minuses and their consequences. And the council would want to take time to think all those through.
I just want to flag that we had previously discussed that the, we lowered the car tax around 2020, and we never brought it back up to the levels that it was at. So, that would be an additional lever that I think would be worth looking at.
So, back to number two. I think I heard concepts where we talked about a target of what we think the impact for the median homeowner should be versus pegging it to a tax rate change. Like, in the past, we used to say plus or minus one to three pennies or something like a range there. I think last year was the first time we talked about, like, targeting a dollar amount per se, which is slightly different than what you're saying, even with an AV impact, being able to adjust the tax rate enough so that the median homeowners that only had a tax bill of X.
I'm on board with that for the property tax. I'm just kind of saying...
There are other taxes that we may...
These other taxes, let's leave those open and make it clear that there's multiple tax rates that we can adjust. To Justin's point, personal property is a different rate.
Okay. How do people feel about including language, though? Including language that calls out other levers if we need to? Is that what?
Yes.
I think that's appropriate.
And then Aaron also had an edit on beginning of sentence two, paragraph two, or sentence one, just changing the whole thing.
Yeah, I would prefer just to change the whole thing. And as Art said, bring clarity to like, the driver of the revenues is basically the residential tax rate. This is what, like, yeah, AV, or we're trying to keep taxpayer burden to this. And to the extent we're not able to adhere to that, like, all of us need to recognize that that's placing an increased burden unless we're coming up with other levers that can help offset the burden that the AV tax increase slash tax, real estate tax increases are, like, absorbing for the overall budget.
So, I think we've got enough, I think, that we can work with, and you'll see language then. Our, our goal with all this is to send language out Tuesday afternoon, so the council, like, tomorrow afternoon, so the council can then discuss it on Wednesday morning. So, what you'll see then for bullet two is going to be much shorter than it is right now. It's going to have a, a, a target on median, single-family homeowner, or median homeowner.
Can we take the last sentence there, the council school board will continue to remain in contact, and expand that into something online? Because there are so many unknowns at this point, or so many uncertainties, it's essential that we all understand this as a work in progress and communication between all elected officials. Essential?
Depends on what's going on.
It depends on what's going on.
Someone's not happy with this.
I think we have three concepts. One, tying it to the median tax bill, openness to exploring other revenues, and three, the commitment to stay in, in contact with the school board.
Because anytime you talk about revenue levers, I also want to look at expense levers, right? So, it'd be obvious thing. Yeah, so, I would want to see language that, that needs to be, we should not just be looking at revenue levers. Like, there should be expense.
That should be articulated.
I think that might be a different lever.
That's right. Yeah, two is generally the revenue number.
Well, let's, I would like to add a third one, then, that looks at expenses.
All right. Are we good to move on to bullet three? "The budget should ensure competitive compensation for employees, provide funding for professional development and training, and foster initiatives to prevent retention and recruitment."
If you had not, so that's fine.
Four, "The budget should include ongoing funds to maintain initiatives implemented in the last fiscal year, including infrastructure maintenance, including paving, sidewalk improvements, walk, bike, and other micro-mobility and project delivery."
So, for this one, I mean, I just want to clarify, like, you know, we, some of the things that we were talking about was that we are like one-plus million dollars per year in the hole in terms of repaving our roads. Would that be included in, like, initiatives taken on in the last year? Or would we need to have, like, clearer language regarding some of these, like, big issues that we have?
I would say every time when you have an opportunity to focus and be clear about something specific, it's better than sort of throwing the kitchen sink at it. And this did get a little kitchen sinky.
Okay.
So, one, one thing that is something that we need to do is to wean ourselves off of using capital reserves for paving and build that into the tax rate.
Right.
So, it's sustained.
Because, right, at least from my perspective, like, we're not on a sustainable path for road paving. And that's like a huge thing that's sort of gotten kicked down the road for many years. And so, that's something that I would like to see city council address in the coming years.
Sidewalks are in the same category.
Yeah.
So, is there agreement to sort of tighten this one to focus in on that sort of piece of core infrastructure?
So, that would take out then micro-mobility, project delivery, and bike on the kitchen sink?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, like, take out bike for, I mean, I would hope that we would have...
The lavatory.
Yeah.
And when repaving, you know, implement the bike master plan, which is what we will do.
Yeah, okay. But also, I mean, I guess the key part of that is like, you know, the, the connection to the schools. I guess that's already in progress. So, like, those things wouldn't get pushed aside, to be clear. Yeah, okay. So, okay.
I want to make sure we don't lose sight that we need pedestrian by faster plan. We need to also look at the walkability. Although, I'm wondering, what are we talking about here with other micro-mobility? It seems like we're not really, that, that's one, I think, maybe we just don't necessarily happen to have right here.
So, I, I think the thrust idea is that, like, how do we build in sidewalk and paving into the operating budget, rather than use one-time money? All the other things, I think, we're taking care of through council priorities and CIP. So, if that's actually the ask, then let's take out all the other things and trust that council priorities and CIP will take care of those.
Yeah.
Those are in the preamble.
Yeah. I guess it almost, it might be nice to have just for, for the Bank Falls Church community and other communities that are interested in this, it just might be worth having a note that by investing in our road paving, that means that we will also be investing in additional bike lanes in the future through the road paving program.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know if that could be...
Tie it into...
Tie it in somehow.
Number eight, like, our GOEP and our CIP programs include greenhouse gas emissions. And the only way we can do that is reducing cars on the roads, and how to reduce cars on the road, and TFS bikes on the road.
Well, we could say something about a complete streets program, which incorporates all of that.
Yeah. Hopefully, that's not too kitchen sinky, but like, I think that at least sends a signal to the community as well as to staff, so that it would be the road paving and...
Still a sink.
Well, like, this is how we end up with four last year, right? Like, I guess if,
what does ask us to be of staff? Like, are we trying to build into the operating budget, sidewalk and paving? And if that's the case, then that should be what number four is. And if we want to make sure that bike and micro-mobility and whatever else doesn't get orphaned, then we just need to bring it up in council priorities. But those are two different asks. I would ask us to be more disciplined here.
I agree.
Okay. So, then that would, that would be fine with me. And then we will be bringing this up during council priorities.
All right, we're ready for five. So, this is about tax relief. "The budget should ensure sufficient funding for tax relief programs, along with policy recommendations to ensure such programs are adjusted for inflation."
Didn't we agree to adjust for inflation this year? Did you need to change that?
So, the council did update policy last year.
So, that policy doesn't need to be updated, but I want to ensure that we have sufficient funding for the tax relief programs. I think you can strike the policy recommendations. We, we accomplished that last year.
Okay. All right, item six. "The budget should include ongoing funds for public safety and emergency management in a rapidly growing community."
In light of the comment we talked about competitive pay for public safety, do we think we need to re-benchmark, I guess, general government pay and match what our neighbors do?
So, we are planning to do a market analysis. Because of some of the things that have been happening in public safety in particular, we've accelerated that, and we've sort of moved it to the front of the line. So, the question for the council is whether you want to speak specifically to public safety or just sort of more broadly?
It gets kind of covered under number three.
I think it is.
It compares compensation for employees, the employees.
I had the same reaction to Letty for number six. Like, I think it says should include ongoing funds. I think the budget guidance statement should just acknowledge more candidly, like, the budget will need to increase funds to ensure, you know, full, a full complement of public safety, or fully meet public safety needs, or, you know, the budget will need to prioritize filling public service vacancies or public safety vacancies.
Yeah, that is a choice, though, right? We don't have to do that. And we will not fill SROs and not fill the 11 spots, right? But that is, that's kind of the council discussion here, is do we think we actually want to do that?
I, to me, it's not a choice. Like, I think it's fundamental in terms of a core government service, that we're going to need to fund our public safety team. And we should just acknowledge now that it's going to come at a heavier price, I guess, is what you're already saying, while going into this budget season.
It's going to be a specific, you're going to have a...
A slide about... Yeah.
On budget time, you're going to have a, you're going to spend time on...
But it's that, and it's the inter-jurisdictional agreements. Like, all of the public safety costs are going to be the significant cost that is increasing things during this budget cycle while we're also increased, like, facing decreased revenues.
That's right. That's the tension.
And I think six from last year was about more than just the salaries, because that wasn't what we were facing last year. We were thinking about increasing population, we were thinking about...
We had a much higher vacancy rate than we do this year, even though it's at 25%. That's much less than we had a year ago.
Well, this one in my mind is not related to salaries, though. This was related to other public safety and emergency management issues.
Yeah, with meeting public safety needs.
Right, right. Yeah, this was because we were growing, and we thought we needed to increase staff to meet that. I think this year, it's more competitive environment salary-wise.
Right.
So, I'm hearing from council that we do want to make six a declarative statement, still, that we do want to invest in this, because it is a choice, even though we think it's not really up to us, we still want to make that choice.
I think what's throwing people off is the word ongoing. That cat sees continuation. I think maybe the word needed or necessary, just something to say, it's the funds we need, not really optional.
Right.
Ongoing is kind of like, what does that mean?
How about the budget should fund public safety and emergency management needs in a more competitive environment, you know, whatever?
Yeah, that's what I would do. I would put competitive. I mean, our community is growing, but we're also competing with Arlington, who's paying a lot more.
Yeah. So, is that enough for your work?
Yeah.
Scroll up, please, Cindy.
All right, moving to seven. "The budget should consider ongoing funds for continued rent and food assistance for the low-income, for low-income families, and include options to increase ongoing funding for affordable housing." So, the council did take action mid-budget with the budget amendment of two weeks ago.
Any objections or changes?
I mean, I think it should be watched to make sure what we have, we have increased our funding for it. Isn't enough. We've talked about that every time we've increased it. So, I don't think it should be eliminated, but we may or may not choose to increase it. I think it should be something that's consciously decided.
The budget should monitor and consider funds?
Yeah. Do we have enough? Is it too much? Is it too little?
All right. Then A is...
I think it's definitely kitchen sinky, because we've had that since we adopted these plans, and we have not invested in this. So, I think, you know, it sounds super harsh, but if we're, we have to choose other things over, we have to choose funding our police, or our schools, or whatever the case may be, we need to be specific about what we are going to invest in. we need to be specific about what we are going to invest in for the go-eve and seat, and if we're gonna miss the targets or not. I mean, right now, we're gonna miss all our targets that we set out in our plan. So even though we have great specificity in the plans, the plans have been put on a shelf, and we have deferred spending money on that in light of all the other things we've chosen to spend money on. So my suggestion is, you know, we work with our staff, like, what can we do?
How about we, we can work with council to be more specific on targeted investments in this area, and then that's the discussion. Now, those are the right targeted investments, but we can make those commitments. So we'll work on this language to sort of set that discussion up.
Great.
Number nine, the utility fund budget should provide a plan to finance additional sanitary sewer capacity to address the growth expected from new developments and mitigate rainfall-induced inflow and infiltration of the collection system as called for in the proposed capacity purchase agreement of Fairfax County. So I think by the time this budget is adopted, we'll, we'll be already implementing that plan.
So do we need nine, then?
I would say we don't.
I mean, I find so, like, as you fund the fund, like, that there's money in it to pay for all of it, so.
Wyatt, refresh us on when that discussion is.
So we have that in January. So authorization to sign the agreement with Fairfax County, and that will be accompanied with a plan of finance for those purchases and meeting any other requirements the county has.
Contingent of that, I think you can take out nine.
Yeah.
Right, that means we accomplish it in 2020. We will have accomplished it in 2020.
So ten and eleven are, you know, one relates to kind of our standard language of making sure people don't forget about the investment in the pension fund, so we plan to keep that in. And then eleven, public information on the budget.
Do we, to Letty's point on expense side, do we have number 12 that we're not just looking at increasing revenues, we're looking at how we can decrease expenses as well? I mean, that should go part and parcel with the budget, but I think maybe we need to state that so that we're aware of the two directions that your levers can go.
What do you all think about it? Two, two B, like, right after the revenue levers?
I think they should be further.
Like, right after that, and not relegated to 12 at the end.
Don't divide them.
Number three.
It could, yeah, it could just be three, and then that's the closure.
We can do that.
We have a statement recognizing the challenges our city population has undergone. I think, is that anywhere in there?
I think we would rewrite paragraph number two with that new kind of economic federal changes, taking that into account.
I think we need to recognize, I think we made a clear statement of recognition that the circumstances today are not the same as they were a year ago.
I agree. I think, that's what I think with that second paragraph, where we talk about the federal government loss of, you know, employees. I did want to, Wyatt, on that last one, I did want to, one of the versions I was reading with the proposed town halls, and this happened last year, too. I know it was just like a proposed date, but the one that was proposed is during the school's spring break, and I know this happened last year, too. So if we could try to, it, I know it was just a proposed date, I think it was the April 3rd. If we could move that either a week earlier or a week later, so that, I know there's another one that's not during spring break, but I think if we have, both town halls shouldn't be during spring break.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
So the April 3rd one is currently in, in spring break? We'll move that one.
What else people have in guidance?
Can I just ask that when you do that second paragraph in the preamble, can you carry over some of that to amend the first paragraph of the actual resolution, that whereas paragraph, so that it, instead of talking about key new initiatives and trends, sort of encapsulates the vibe of this budget cycle?
The first whereas?
Yeah.
And Wyatt, you could go find out a draft tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah.
And then, who want to join us? Wednesday, 8:30. We'll talk about it again.
Maybe one quick topic. We are in the process of a building permits assessment on process improvements and customer service improvements. We also think we need to take a look at building permit fees. Is that anything the council wants to discuss in budget guidance? We think it's gonna be necessary as part of sustaining the building permit fund and implementing some of the recommendations.
Sure. Yeah. Maybe you should include on that slide with additional, I mean, it's not a tax, it's a fee, but the taxes are as another revenue lever.
I guess as part of the site plan process, we already raised it, that some of ours looked out of line.
We haven't adjusted them for 10 years, so we're also, they need to be looked at. We want those services to be, development's fan for development on the building permit side as well.
I think we need to include fees in when we talk about tax rates and tax rates of fee, because in addition to that, we're gonna have to take another look at the trash fees based on how people have opted in, and that's just gonna be part of it.
I think we're done on trash fees for the coming budget. We certainly will need to look at it, like, this time next year, we'll be reassessing it?
For 27, so we're good on 27.
We're good on 27. Okay.
Any final thoughts on budget guidance? Okay, thank you to our school board friends for bearing with us and watching us make the sausage.
All right. Thank you, council.
We have consent. We need to talk through the consent items.
Are there any questions on the consent calendar? All right. If you do have any, send email them to me, and we'll make sure the staff reports and address them.
Thank you all.
Thank you, council.